Hi, this is the zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. I am Janice Tatarka. I am joined by Marilyn Vega Torres, Joe Mahoney, Arthur Arsenalth, and Hugo Perdomo. And of course, all of you know John De Priest. And we're missing Paulette today, who isn't feeling well. So, um, the first case in front of us today, uh, first of all, we all, when you speak, please speak directly into the microphone when you choose to speak. Please speak up loudly. If you can't hear me, which is generally not an issue, but if you can't hear me, please raise your hand and I will know that you cannot hear me. The first case in front of us is two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-one, one twenty-two Warren Avenue, one twenty-two Warren VG LLC. We've had a request to continue this. Do I have a motion to grant that continuance? Marilyn makes the motion. Do I have a second? Joe, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. The next case in front of us is two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-seven, three twenty Revere Beach Parkway, GVLP Inc., DBA Vita Verda. They have also asked for a continuance. Do I have a motion to continue this? Made by Arthur, seconded by Hugo. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the next one is actually something we're going to listen to. Two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-eight, two sixty-seven Broadway, Ola Bayoda. For the special permit for the establishment of a marijuana dispensary. Please come up if you're going, if you're here to speak on this. And this is one that has been before us before. Um, and then went to the planning board. So, John, do you want to talk to us about what the planning board recommended?
Uh, the planning board, uh, did approve the site plan and recommended approval of the, um, special permit with conditions. Uh, do you have a list?
But it is my understanding that there have been some significant changes or at least clarifications made about this. So, we as I know, I, could you please come and talk to us about what your proposal is, has been as an updated fashion? And announce yourself, your name and your address when you come up?
Uh, before that.
You, okay, you have to speak, okay. Give that to John. Yeah, you'd like to.
Uh, my attorney, um, came in close contact with someone with COVID, so he's not present, but he's here virtually, so I'm gonna have my.
Um, okay. Okay, he, they, what he just said was that the attorney is on, you're, uh, I don't know how we're gonna do that. The attorney is on the computer and he will be doing an introduction for us. Um, uh, let's see, I guess I can put, John, can I put this over here so it can be heard? Hold on one second, please. Can I put that over there so it can be heard or what? What do you recommend? This one, I guess.
I recommend that it's.
Okay, I guess, well, there we go. I mean, it's, it's not very feasible. We can't really, it's not.
Only that, the, uh, members, uh, the public have to be able to see and hear it as well. And you need to be seeing, he needs, and the lawyer needs to see everything as well.
Okay, but that, but we don't really, but then nobody can hear him speak. But it, but it can't be seen by the members of the, is there anybody here who wishes to view this? If not, we can, we can proceed in this way. If there's somebody here who wishes, is there anybody here who had planned to comment on this particular case?
Furthermore, I, I had requests from the public to attend this way and I had to tell them no because it was not set up this way, as well as a member of the board.
Oh, okay, well then I guess, well, it looks to me like this is not going to work. Because if we've already allowed people who did have wishes to comment on this, that told them they couldn't, I'm not comfortable hearing this at the moment. Okay, you can make your present, well, you can make your presentation, but we're not gonna be able to hear from your lawyer in this case, okay? All right, but you can make your, why don't you take this with you out of the way so we can see that? Sorry, sir, and, um, thank you. So, you will make your presentation as this and, um, we'll assume your attorney is not here.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Um, so we are here, um, in front of.
Introduce yourself again, just for formality.
Sorry, my name is Ola Bayode. I am the founder of House of Ermias, which will be a dispensary, hopefully with your permission, that will be opening up in Chelsea. And, uh, so we've had a few meetings, uh, with the board already. And, you know, there's been a few comments on some of the things that we had, um, presented to you. And, you know, for, uh, the purposes of today is just to go over a presentation of some of the changes we made based off of your request. We're happy to amend a lot of the, uh, the concerns that the board have. Uh, as far as significant changes, um, we don't, we're, we're not really gonna make any significant changes. But if you want us to, based off of what we're presenting today, we have a second plan for that.
We had some, a number of questions because it was a relatively, um, there were some questions raised at the last meeting. And I know at the, for the planning board, you made some changes. So why don't you share, before we get into what we might want to see changed, why don't you tell us what you propose?
Awesome. So can we, uh, be scrolling? Can, can we have someone scroll?
Hmm?
Can we have someone scroll?
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, um, for the purposes of today, if we look at the agenda, a lot of it is based off of the concerns you had regarding the layout that we initially showed. Um, as far as concerns about parking. Um, and then we're gonna spend some time talking about the security plan that we have set up. Also gonna talk about signage. The delivery schedule was something that was a big issue for the, uh, the team as well. So we'll talk about that and also hours of operations were a concern, uh, because of the multi-use, um, uh, type building that it is. So, we're gonna cover all these topics today. Next. So, if, if we look at the first floor layout, and I hope you guys can see it here. Um, so, the biggest concerns that you had, um, were about, first of all, the actual docking station where we're gonna be expecting deliveries. So if we could see here, can I take this with me? So if you see here, this is Broadway, this is Congress. Deliveries are gonna be scheduled to come this way, right? So that's one of the things that's gonna happen. And we are designating this area for how we're gonna be receiving. And as you can see here, uh, we're gonna have the corridor to where we're gonna have the vault that is gonna store product and also store any things of, um, monetary value as well. Um, and then the other, uh, part that you guys should be aware of as well is the main entrance will be from the Broadway sidewalk. And it is going to be ADA accessible as well, the, both the entry, the, both the entry and the exit. And we have the exit here, uh, which shares, um, with the, it shares with the, uh, the tenant entrance. However, the configuration we're gonna make is to have guardrails to separate, um, any interaction between, uh, tenants, uh, that may be coming in and from customers who will be coming out. And we have other diagrams that will show sort of what this flow is going to look like. Uh, so in a nutshell, uh, this is it. And we've also included certain doors to make sure and to minimize the, the occurrence of any interaction between, um, tenants and, um, customers.
So you're saying that's a shared exit door? Is that what you're saying?
It's a shared, but we, we're having guardrails here set up to create that divide. And then typically as well, because this is where residents, the residential parking is gonna take place, um, it's expected that most residents are gonna be entering from the back anyways. That's gonna be the typical programming. Next slide. And as you see here, so this diagram here, I wanted to show you guys specifically the areas where public are gonna have access to and areas where it's gonna be private as well. So as you can see, uh, with this salmon-looking color here, it's gonna be areas where public are gonna have access to. So this is gonna be open space, retail area, areas where we're gonna be transacting business. Um, the where you see with the, uh, with the blue-green color is gonna be employee access only. So here, this is gonna be the security check vestibule. Uh, we also have the basement floor plan. One of the big changes we made on the last meeting, because initially we wanted that to be public use as well. But that was a big, big obstacle that we needed to overcome, you know? So we decided that, you know, we're not even gonna have the basement as public use, it's gonna be specifically for employees only. So as you can see here as well, receiving area, corridor, employee stairs again, vault, all of that stuff will be highly monitored and secured.
Explain to me what you mean by semi-private, shared tenant and employee. What does that mean?
What part that is?
The pink part. The pink ones.
Uh, the, the pink part is because also there's gonna be entries, this, this is a, a major entry for the tenants as well. However, the only time that, um, any of our, um, associates will be using this space is when we're expecting deliveries. So what we're gonna be doing is make sure that we schedule deliveries. One of the recommendations that Mr. De Priest made was to ensure that no deliveries happen after eight PM, I believe. So, and the way, um, typically cannabis transportation logistics are handled, we scheduled these deliveries in advance. And also there's a section here where we're, we're gonna talk about the occurrence, how often we're gonna be expecting these type of deliveries. So that's gonna happen here. Great question, though. Next slide. So this diagram here is showing you guys exactly where product is gonna be. So as far as the CCC guidelines, once the store closes, we can't display any product in the store. So all product that is being displayed has to come back to the vault. So this is again, just ensuring and making, uh, letting you guys know that we're taking the proper precautions to make sure that, you know, product won't be in any areas, uh, that, you know, may pose any security risk.
Where the pink, where the pink overlapped, that there would potentially be deliveries at that section. So would that mean there would be product on there?
Yes, but so with the way the CCC has designed the flow that we need, so there's gonna be a manifest schedule. So the moment that truck is dispatched from our cultivator, they have to make, um, periodical checks within that timeframe, right? So from a pure security perspective, the surveillance is all hooked up and all this information has to be sent to the CCC. Uh, in real time, a lot of data needs to be inputted to make sure that what leaves the actual cultivation facility matches what comes in here. So as far as that product will be secure, there's gonna be cameras.
But there's gonna be product in that area, is what you're, I mean, you say there's no product in that area. I'm just talking, but there's going to be product.
Sorry, when we, we're talking about product, we're talking primarily about displaying, like actually when it's ready to be displayed. When it's coming in is gonna be in packages, in, 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 uh, in different types of bulk packaging, right? So it's not gonna be, like, displayed like we would in the actual retail environment.
Okay.
That's the major thing. Next slide. So here, so this diagram here is showing you guys the actual flow of how tenants and customers, the, the, the relation between them, right? So the purple line that you see here is gonna be the program, programming of how customers are gonna be entering the store. Typically, they come through from the right and then they make their transaction here and then they exit that way. Tenants can come in this way, they go up the stairs, and also tenants also go this way as well, and we have employees going this way. So employees are in green, deliveries in blue. So this just shows you the programming that we have set up. Next slide. So I just wanted to show some diagrams to just give you a visual representation of what we're talking about here. So security vestibule, we can keep going. This part is pretty quick. This is the intended layout and look and feel for the store that we have here, and we can keep going. This is how product is gonna be displayed. So again, with CCC guidelines, what we can do, because flour is gonna require different types of ways you're displaying versus topical creams, oils, et cetera, right? So all of this is gonna be in a glass case, um, and is gonna have the labels educating buyers on what it is that they are going to be consuming and whatnot. So we can keep going. And so for these products that we have here, so the, the major difference is this. These products can't have the actual product in them. So these are gonna be just dummy displays, uh, that we have here. So no product will actually be in there. If a customer says, hey, they wanna buy this, then we go into the back and then we finish that transaction with them. And at the same time, this allows us the ability not to have to constantly take, bring all this stuff back into the vault because there's no product in there. However, with the flour, that also, that always has to come back every single night back into the vault. Yeah, just another way of showing everything.
As the edibles display the same thing, they're not really there and you have to go back and get them?
Yeah, we have, we would have to go back and get them. Yeah, we can keep going. And then for the basement, this one is pretty simple because this is again, designed only for employee use only. No public use is allowed here. We heard, you know, your concerns loud and clear about the, uh, security risk that that poses. So just letting you guys know that we've made those concessions. We moved the bathroom, so we eliminated the, we initially had two bathrooms upstairs. We, and we already have two bathrooms downstairs as well. But because, you know, it's no longer public use, employees can use these bathrooms right here. Next slide. And again, this is just a visual representation. No pro, this is basically telling you guys, no product is ever allowed in the basement. Next slide. Now parking plan. So, this is one of the major concerns that, uh, your team had. And, you know, what we decided to do was come up with multiple solutions that can, you know, settle some of those concerns and de-risk any factors that you may have as far as congestion and creating extra noise. So as far as we're concerned here, Broadway is right here, the, the actual, uh, building is right here. And we have three parking options for customers and employees, right? And all of these are anywhere between three hundred to four hundred meters away from each other, right? So the division, street, alley, parking lot is gonna be restricted only for employees. This is gonna be baked in to the actual lease. So, um, the landlord there, uh, Mr. Jarius Neerson, he is, uh, we have come to an agreement that this will be part of the lease that we have here and that's gonna be restricted to employees only. And then we have the parking on Everett and Chestnut as well for people to be able to leverage. And what the plan is this, the plan is to, you know, have a spot in the website that shows people exact address for these parking lots so that they can use them. The great thing about this location too, and when I was a big fan of it, was because, you know, with the public, access to public transportation, uh, it makes it really easy, uh, for people to use that, that option as well.
Are those public, you're just directing people to public lots, is that what you're saying? Are those public lots, those are not so associated with your lease?
They're, they're not, no.
Okay, so they're just public lots, you're suggesting people can park there?
Exactly. And over time too, you know, the more we build a relationship with our customers, they're gonna know exactly the best way for them to get to our, you know, location. The other thing too, delivery is booming right now. The delivery market is, ever since COVID, even for cannabis, it's been a big thing. So, um, that's another, um, advantage that we have. Next slide. Again, this is just another view of that, just to show you guys, you know, how close it is. Keep going. This is just pictures of the actual parking spots, and they're not delegated for any use right now.
The parking spots for what? For your employees?
Employees.
Okay.
So that's that one. Yes. Yes. This is Chestnut Everett. Now as far as security plans, we are hiring two vendors to help us with our security personnel. Oh, before I get to that, sorry, sorry, before I get to that, uh, can we scroll up? And, uh, so we had, um, Detective Houghton email you, John, I don't know if you've gotten that email yet, so we should be good on that front.
I did, I did receive it.
Okay. And, um, uh, my business partner, we had a meeting with, um, Officer, um, sorry Detective Houghton. Uh, this was, um, uh, last month. And this is basically just letting you guys know that we went through the security plan with him, the narrative, the, the plan, we're just showing you where all the cameras are gonna be. And I'll just quickly read what he said. The CPD appreciates your visit today and sharing your operation and security plan. My review of your plan is that it's more than sufficient to address your business and community needs. I just want to ensure that your plan is amended to include the following, which we're, we totally agree with, by the way. The storing, the storing thirty days of recorded video for city licensing purposes, we're gonna do ninety. Uh, the sharing with the CPD, any outside video that may capture an image needed to assist the CPD in any other investigations not related to your business. As you move forward in the process, we look forward to working with you and assisting you with any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Next slide. And one of the things that we were thinking about, right, was the type of security vendor that we wanted. We wanted somebody that already had some sort of relationship with Chelsea, already had a relationship with the police department. Uh, so we have two different vendors that we're using. So Westcon Five, they actually, um, also are contracted out by, uh, Western Front. They're gonna be our personnel. Elite Security is gonna be our systems. So, that's that. Next slide. And I wanted to give a quick bio of Westcon Five because, you know, one of the things that we wanted to do was make sure that whoever we're working with, they're aligned with our vision of serving the community as well. And these guys have an amazing, amazing, amazing track record of showing this, right? So they have over twenty years of experience in law enforcement. Uh, they've started this Westcon Five business way before the cannabis buzz was happening. So this is something that they saw as like a quick money grab. Uh, they have extensive experience, you know, working with, you know, folks in Chelsea as well. Um, one thing I love about Mark, so Mark himself, he's actually on the board of, uh, parole. Um, and he led a program that got a lot of people who were non-violent crime offenders out early and, um, being able to restart their lives again. So really aligning with what our, our, our culture and values are i- is one of the main reasons why we decided to go, uh, with these folks. He's, he's a professor at Bridgewater State University. And again, um, because of them also working with Western Front, we thought it would be great. And I'm sure you guys have probably heard from them before, I'm not sure. But I know they've been here before. So, we wanna talk about the systems that we're investing in to make sure that this place is ultra-secure, right? We're gonna have motorized IP cameras, fisheye cameras, ten eighty P resolution, fifteen frames per second, low bandwidth to ensure speed and no buffering whatsoever, wide dynamic range, twenty-four hour connectivity, integrated systems, ninety day storage, perimeter surveillance, and what's the last one?
Johnny, yes, maybe.
And they're all gonna be placed in areas that are, all posed as high-security risk. Next. And as far as with our employees, okay, so one thing I forgot to mention about Westcon Five is, you know, part of the creating a security program, it's not just about having security guards and personnel, right? That's one thing. The second thing is, how do you also train our staff to make sure that they're working in conjunction with our security staff to notice any funny behavior that may be happening? So establishing a plan of diversion, making sure that we're not selling to minors, things of that nature. Those are all things that we need to do. And as far as security as well, making sure we're doing thorough background checks. Yes, we are gonna be providing opportunities to people who have been impacted negatively by the war on drugs. But at the same time, uh, we wanna make sure that, you know, the people that we're bringing in are gonna create a safe environment for everybody. And everything is gonna be access control systems, is gonna be entitlement based on your, um, your position. So you're not gonna get access to a spa, a place within the store if that has nothing to do with your job. So all of this stuff is gonna be controlled by technology and, you know, access and making sure we're, uh, establishing proper protocol and keeping the records, uh, for, um, for any sorts of reporting that we may need to do with the CPD or with the city. Next. And based off of the recommendations from Westcon Five, they recommended that we hire three, uh, security personnel, uh, for our store. Um, so we're gonna have a security supervisor, we're gonna have, uh, two security agents. One of the things that, you know, we talked about too was how do we now also provide an opportunity for people in Chelsea? Like maybe creating jobs through, you know, what they've done, proper training for people to, uh, create more opportunities for people in Chelsea as well. So, you know, part of our hiring will be to make sure that we are emphasizing people in the city first and then going outwards if we need to.
So it would be one security person per shift? Is that how it's working or how, how will that, how will that work out into your business timing?
So yeah, we're probably gonna be rotating two, two at a time. So they, they won't work one, the whole shift for that day, so it'll be two shifts a day.
Okay.
Yeah. Next slide. And yeah, this is just the security plan for where the cameras are. So I know this is pretty small for everyone to read here, um, but, and yeah, you guys can't even see, sorry about that. Uh, but yeah, this is just showing you the placements of where the security cameras are. So you could look at it in the actual documents that I, I have with you if you have any questions there. Delivery schedule. So I wanted to put this slide on here first, um, because just for people to get an understanding of how product moves, right? So it starts off at the cultivation facility, then there'll be a distributor or transporter. Sometimes that cultivator is that person, or sometimes they outsource that to somebody else, and then it gets to the retailer. So that's the first step. Next. The types of, of vehicles, uh, that are typically used for transporting are like those, you know, Amazon Sprinter vans. So this isn't gonna be like big jumbo, you know, eighteen-wheelers or whatever coming in and disrupting Broadway. Super sleek sorts of vehicles are the ones that are gonna be doing that. Again, they're all equipped with cameras and state-of-the-art technology to make sure that they're keeping up with the best practices from the CCC. Uh, and so the concern that you guys had about the delivery, I thought hard about it. I asked so many people who are already operating Massachusetts, uh, California, Oklahoma. And the trend that I was seeing was that you're not getting deliveries every day. Probably, you're usually probably getting delivery once, deliveries once every two weeks. So that's what we expect the frequency to be. So again, it's not gonna be something that's constantly happening every single day causing traffic. The other type of delivery we're gonna be expecting is gonna be office supplies, right? So we're gonna need like water jugs for employees, we're gonna need paper towels, we're gonna need pens, we're gonna need paper, stuff like that. And we estimate, me asking people around, uh, estimated two-week intervals for, for, for those as well. And then the other type of delivery schedule we need to set up will be with our cash, uh, uh, our armored services, uh, uh, vendor who would be the one who would be delivering cash from onsite to the bank. Any questions there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the security, um, so you're gonna have three guards, let's say three guards, one supervisor. On the shift, you're gonna have only one?
So on the shift, depending on, you know, the demand, or at, at first we're gonna have two, like, and then through trial and error and seeing how typical operations go, then, uh, we'll decide whether to have, you know, one or two. But the idea is to have two, um, at a time.
And how long will be their shift?
Say that again, sorry.
How long will be their shift?
It'll be typical eight-hour, eight-hour intervals. But the way we, we wanna, uh, think about it is, it's gonna be more, they're gonna, uh, be qualified for overtime, so it's probably gonna be anywhere between fifty to fifty-five hour range because we're gonna be a seven, um, seven-day-a-week operation.
And another question, um, about the parking, the one they ask you about the fence. Are you gonna, uh, have those fence or, or gate open? Or gonna be any sign for the employees for, for the current, current?
Yeah, we're, we're definitely going to re, revisit that and, you know, make sure it's in a way that's not causing any disruption. So creating a plan that says, okay, maybe whoever comes on the first shift, they have a way of parking versus the people who are coming in after. So that's something that we definitely will, um, design to make sure that it's not causing any, um, sort of bottleneck.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Next slide. And then the signage plan. And, you know, with Chelsea, you know, the, the signage requirements aren't very, aren't very strict and we're not doing anything too outlandish, right? And again, we don't, we're not doing anything that's gonna be too, um, appeasing for minors or any of that such. We wanna keep it super low-key. Uh, so here is basically the design that we have for the signage, is gonna proportional to the building, non-obstructive, about five feet wide with a backlit signage. And that all fits all the requirements for the city. Next. So let's talk about hours of operations. So one of the concerns that you guys had in the last call was, you know, because, you know, residents are gonna be living upstairs, there was fears of how that's gonna cause noise and disruption. And, you know, when we, um, looked at it, you know, we, we pulled up the, the, sorry, we pulled up the municipal code, which says, you know, creation of noise at night, it shall be unlawful for any person in charge of any store, garage, filling station, apartment, house, theater, restaurant, bar, or other premises where persons gather or enter for purposes of amusement or trade within the city, either by such person's own actions or by permitting or allowing any persons who may resort to the premises to disturb the neighbors or public's peace by loud noises, brochure songs, operation of musical equipment, machines, instruments, or other musical devices, the use of which produces noise plainly audible at a distance of two hundred feet, interrupting the peace or quiet of the city after the hours of ten PM and before the hours of eight AM. And as you know, our hours of operations is gonna be from nine AM to nine PM. Next slide. And yeah, I just wanted to show, like, what other dispensaries in the area, what their hours of operations are. Um, because yeah, it was recommended that ours be from nine to six. And, you know, for all the other guys, it's nine to nine. So we just think that that's, you know, just follow a uniform order there.
So what, how many days a week are you going to, is your plan to open?
Seven days a week.
John, did you have a question, sorry?
Who recommended nine to six? No one recommended nine to six.
Yeah, somebody did.
Um, if you, you recall, uh, when I read the potential. Um, if you, you recall, uh, when I read the potential petitions out at the, uh, planning board meeting, it was nine A M to nine P M.
No, I, no, it wasn't you. It wa- it wasn't you or anybody here, but it was somebody else. I can't remember who it was who said that, but somebody did. And then the last thing, I, I, is that the last slide? Or is there one more?
Yeah.
And then the last thing, sorry, uh, the last thing was, you know, from what, uh, Mr. De Priest had, um, told us, um, as far as recommendations. No onsite consumption whatsoever is gonna happen. He also recommended that we have sale by appointment for the first sixty days, uh, which is totally fine with us. Uh, hours will not exceed nine A M to nine P M. Uh, separate paths between the tenants and the store, which we showed. Um, basement should be used for employees and storage, which we showed. Uh, and showed that Division Street parking is actually available. Uh, and it's not assigned for any other use, and it is not delegated for any other use right now. So, um, all of that, I feel like we've checked those boxes.
Thank you for a much more detailed presentation than your last meeting before us. I appreciate that, thank you. Um, do we have any questions? Joe?
With regards to the tenants you keep referring to above you, are they commercial or residential?
Uh, residential.
Okay, so i- there shouldn't be a, a, a constant stream of, uh, people coming in relative to the, uh, secu- for security purposes?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions at this point? You go?
Yeah, about the parking in the back of the building, you got only three spots?
So, um, we're not gonna leverage any of the, the parking for, um, for the, for the, for the, for the back anymore. We feel like based off of the, um, based off of the ones we showed, the, 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 I'm, I'm blanking on the word right now, sorry about that. But based off of the other provisions that we showed, we believe that's gonna be enough for our employees and also.
No, but my question is, is confirmed that you only have three spaces?
Uh, we have two designated for us to use, but we're, we're not gonna, we're gonna use that only for docking and loading.
Okay, but my question is, if those three spots are already taken, where the delivery van will?
No, no, those would be designated for, the, so there's spots designated for, um, the biz, for the commercial, and the remaining are designated for the residential.
But I question whether those parking spaces are really available or not. I had a conversation with Mr. Snarson, uh, this morning, uh, relative to the parking. And from what I understand, although ten parking spaces required, only eight are provided. So how are the parking, and, and most of those were by the special permit that was issued for the building itself. Were to be, um, uh, set aside for the residence, not for the commercial use. So you really don't have those two spaces in the back of the building.
No, please stand, no. Introduce yourself for the record, please.
Hi, uh, my name's Jerry Snarson. Uh, I own the property.
Your address, please?
Uh, three seventy-eight Broadway in Chelsea, and I own the property along with my wife.
Hold the microphone to your face, please, so we can hear it, thank you.
The parking, oh boy, the, the parking behind was always designated as residential. Uh, he has the option of the, the, well, it's not an option, part of the lease is the parking lot on Division Street. And that's where all his employees are gonna be parking. He also has the option behind my office at three seventy-eight Broadway of leasing out a couple, three, four spaces, whatever he needs to make his operation work. The, the parking behind the units, there are sixteen units, eight on each floor. They're all one bedroom apartments. They're, uh, uh, so they shouldn't be, they're just all one bedroom apartments. Ninety percent of the people who live on Broadway do not have, uh, automobiles. And I have, I have ten units up the street on the same side, and I don't have one car out of the ten residential units I have over there. Did I miss the point?
So, so the question is still, if, if you're losing two spaces in the back, how are you setting aside parking or loading spaces for this unit? If all the spaces are supposed to be reserved for the residential tenants above?
They've, they've always been reserved for the residential tenants above. That's what, that's what the permit, uh, to put up the property, to put up the building was, was meant for, correct?
But the petitioner stated that there will be ramps and loading in the rear.
At, at particular times, there, there's, uh, uh, out of the sixteen units who are, the, the people living there, again, they're all one bedroom. So they should all be working people for the most part. They're gonna be out and about during the day. There's, there's always gonna be at least three, four, five spaces available during the day. So it's gonna be easy in, easy out. I don't think the, the unloading is gonna take more than fifteen, twenty minutes or a half hour, I really don't know. It's usually about fifteen, so it's not like they're leaving the car there.
But the special permit that you received for the building indicated that they are to reserved for the parking. It didn't say reserved for the parking certain times of the day, it just said reserved for the parking. If you're gonna change it, and since you've lost the two spaces, you're gonna have to come before the board for a change in your special permit anyway.
Right, right. But I, I don't think that should hold up him.
Well, I, I disagree with you. I don't know how he, how the board can improve this if it, if you, if the spaces that he's claiming to have are not there.
Correct, they're, they're, we lo- we lost due to structural changes in the building of the property, due to the ramp for the handicap and, and miscellaneous others. We just lost two parking spots. It wa- it wasn't, it was, it wasn't avoidable, let me put it that way.
That, that may be the case, but it still affects this petition, because there's a claim that the spaces behind there for loading. And for, um, emp- employees, so that's.
No, the, the employees, we had worked out that he's taking the lease up the street, and there's at least eight parking spots here.
On Division Street.
On Division Street. He also has the option behind my office at three seventy-eight Broadway, which he didn't mention.
All right, but then you're gonna have to show that those spaces on three seventy-eight Broadway are not set aside or required, minimum required for the use of three seventy-eight.
Right, I, I have sixteen rentable spaces behind three seventy-eight Broadway that are not to set aside for anything, anybody.
Well, that, that.
And the same on Division Street is not set, set aside for anybody. So when he's gonna have a, a loading and unloading, and it sounds to me he's talking about fifteen, twenty minutes every other week. Every, uh, every, every two weeks, which is every other week. I don't think that's gonna be a problem, loading and unloading for fifteen. I mean, that happens when people come and unload their cars, and they pull up towards the, the back of the building to bring it in quickly. And then put their car either in the parking spot or back in Broadway or wherever they're going. I mean, this is a normal, normal part of living. Fifteen minutes every, fifteen, twenty, you're gonna, the, uh, the Amazon, the U P S, they just duck in and duck out. And they do that in parking lots all over the place. So fifteen, twenty minutes to unload, I don't think is, 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 is a massive problem. And I do have a, a lot of parking in Broadway that he has accessibility to.
Are there two spaces, or is there a space that's gonna be designated solely for delivery? Or is that a moving?
Target.
Target based on where the cars are parked?
There, there, there will, there will be a, a loading s- space for anybody who wants to come and unload their car, which will be in the same spot behind the building.
So if I'm a tenant there and I'm parked in that space and it's a time for a delivery, I have to move my car?
No, they'll drive around the block and then they'll, we'll wait for you to finish up.
But I'm a tenant living there?
Right.
I'm already parked in the space.
But if you pull behind a loading, loading spot, space for anybody who lives in the building, if they're unloading, uh, if they're unloading a van for, with their furniture or things, they get a furniture delivery. It's gonna be, it's a normal part of life.
Then there's a conflict here, because your special permit for the building indicated that they were to be reserved for tenants, not for loading. So if you're designated for loading, you're not meeting your special permit.
I'll designate the two spots to him, or the one spot for him for loading. I don't know how to, to say this without getting crazy about it.
You gotta change your permit if you wanna do that, is what he's saying. It's not the same. That's all he's saying. He's not saying if you have to come and ask for that change.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, John is saying that if you choose, we're not saying yes or no, you can't do that at this point. Because, what we're saying is that under your current approvals, you can't do that. And so you can't, you can't double dip a spot, so to speak. You can't say, under one permit, it's allowed for residents, and under this permit, the same spot's allowed for delivery. You can't do that. You can come in and say, from now on, we'd like that spot to just be for delivery, and you can have that discussion with the board.
So, so I've gotta come back in front of the board to do that?
Because it's a different permit.
Okay.
It's right, I mean, it's, it's, it's a different, you're asking for a change to your existing permit before you can make the change, you can activate this permit.
Right, I, I know when we took this out a while back, that I, 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 I assumed that a, a change like that could have been done within, uh, the, the zoning boards, without going back in front of it. But I, I've, I found that now that's changed.
You would have to ask John, and then the board would have to determine whether or not it's a major or minor to change. And then that would, I mean, so there are, yes, there are options on doing it, but what John is saying is that you, we can't double dip.
Right, okay.
Am I summarizing correctly?
Yes, but I'm also saying that, and, and, and less than until that, uh, decision is made, there is no parking space available.
Right, no, that's, I mean, that's what I'm saying. So one has to happen before the other. So it's a sequential thing, yes, sir?
Yeah. Would it change anything, 'cause part of the arrangement as well is because the, uh, residential is being built, I'm actually going to be a tenant there as well. Uh, Jerry and I have talked about that, because for me, running the business is just more, you know, efficient for me to, if it's new as well. That could also pose that, and if I have a parking spot, me being the tenant, do I have that right to do that?
But we're not asking, we're not, and, and, John, correct, you come wrong, we're not granting a permit for you as a person, we're granting a permit for the business. And we're saying the business has to have a spot. What you're saying is, this can accommodate it, but we can't designate, you know, we can't say that. I don't think we can say that. We can't say that your, your personal space happens to be allowable for this. I, I don't think that doesn't work.
Even if I was a tenant and I like actually gave away that right to the business?
Yeah, but the problem comes when you decide you've made so much money, you wanna move out. That's, that's where the problem is, if you can see it.
But in addition, that there is a legal document that's been recorded in the registry of deeds that says the spaces have to be set aside for the residents. And you just can't negate that.
No, he's saying, oh, I'm a resident, can I let them use my space to deliver? If I'm a resident, he's asking, if I'm a resident, can I just say, oh geez, use my space?
It's circumventing the, the special permit.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but that's the question he was asking, I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think that works.
That doesn't change the fact that it's not, it's still a personal space. You can't, again, it's still a double dipping of, you're asking us, what, what you're basically asking us to say is, okay, then don't give us any parking spot for delivery. Because I'm not gonna need it, 'cause I'm gonna use my personal space, and we can't do that. Because then you, then you've got a problem here. It's like, well, where are you gonna get deliveries?
We're just using the loading area for fifteen minutes every two weeks, just like Amazon, just like all of them.
But listen, Mr. Snarson, I'm not disagreeing with you, but you have a permit right now that says you can't do that. You have a permit that says, I have to use this for a pers- for your tenants.
Is it residential tenants or?
Yes, that's what it says for your residential tenants, that's what it says.
Right.
So that's, wha- whatever we may agree or disagree with your assumption, it doesn't matter. We have to look at the law and before us and the permit before us. And the permit before us doesn't say, oh, fifteen minutes every two weeks, you can do this. It doesn't allow that.
So, so the parking is just for residential, I can't use it for commercial?
That's what the permit says.
Is, is that what the permit says?
I'm assuming, that's.
I, I don't remember, to be honest with you.
And I guess that's something we'd have to look at, but that would negate us having, being able to make a decision today. That's, the, the real question here is, yeah, we can look at that, and we can determine, you know, you can work with John to determine whether or not, you know, you wanna make this sequentially. Your, make your changes. And then here, but right now, you're saying we don't, we don't, you're, you're saying you have a parking space that you don't have. You're saying that this permit is requesting a parking space that you really don't have the legal right to say he can use.
If, if the parking is specifically for the residential portion of the building?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if that's what it says, then.
I, I don't, I don't know what it says.
I, I, I've checked it several, when, when, when this development, uh, when this proposal first came in. And I saw it said that they had it reserved for the residential.
It has to be for residential, okay.
Arthur, do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's like you said, come up for, whether it's a major or minor modification, handle that first. And then if we accept it, then we, we'll continue this case till next month. Have your case come as a major modification to do the permit. Accept that one or reject it or whatever, and then, and then we'll do that.
I'll go through, I'll start the, the thing tomorrow.
Yeah, so that, so that way, because you gotta give the public the right to, to comment on your change in special permit.
Or us the right to determine whether or not we think, yeah, I mean. That's, you know, if it's a minor modification, then it's something the board can decide on its own. If it's considered a mi- a major modification, then it would have to be published again.
And, and John consider, is John the one who makes the determination?
No, the board, the board does. It is, as far as I'm concerned, that is beyond the authority the board has given me to determine, uh, whether it's major or minor.
No, we have to determine if it's major or minor.
Okay.
You ask, you come to the, you come to the planning board, you come to the planning department, and you talk with John. He comes in front of us, he makes that proposal and says, this is what Mr. Snarson's proposing on this permit, he wants to modify this special permit. Do you think it's major or minor? And then we vote on that.
We just gotta be presenting a little bit more information just within five minutes, so there has to be a little bit more.
Oh, no problem, no problem, yeah, no problem.
And it has to be a formal request. It can't be just like, oh geez, I'd like to do that right now.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'll do that with John tomorrow.
So does, I mean, it sounds, I mean, let's ask some additional questions that we might have on this. But it seems as though we may want to hold this on over until we get Mr. Snarson's input.
Yeah, so.
But any additional questions? Well, I'm gonna raise one question, oh, John, I'm sorry, all right, John, go right ahead.
Under the, the page vehicle types, you have cash deliveries once a week. Now, does that mean?
Not me, him.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm addressing it to. Is that once a week?
Correct.
Okay, and during the period of time, I assume all your cash, because most of your business is a cash check type. Or cash, cash business, you're gonna stick it in the vault?
Yes, and also, also, um, in the cannabis industry, we act, they actually accept debit and credit card too. Um, so that's something that a lot of customers are, are, are using. So with their debit card, transactions can go. So in that situation, we wouldn't store cash, credit card, if they're treating their credit card as a debit card. That's something that consumers also do as well. But in situations where it is cash, yeah, we're storing that in the vault.
Is that a relatively new government change?
No, it's, it's been, it's been like that, 'cause you know, you can use your credit card for cash back and it's treated as a debit card. So that's another, um, scenario.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions I have?
I have a couple. I wanted to go back to, um, well, the delivery and the parking. But do you think that the delivery trucks fit in the garage? Do they fit?
Absolutely.
Like the U P S truck and stuff like that to get in?
U P S truck will likely not be going there.
Okay.
It's gonna be the Sprinter vans, 'cause U P S is, is U P S, you know.
And you'll be, um, notifying these delivery drivers to deliver in the back of the building?
They have to be scheduled.
Okay, so, and then my next question was regarding security. You said you'd have two security guards, will they both be inside the space, or will you have one like outside? Like, there's been places where they have someone at the door, kind of thing, and then someone inside.
Oh, that's gonna be based off of the recommendations from the security firm, uh, from Westcon five, so that would be.
How many employees will you be having?
Six at a time. We're probably gonna hire, um, about eight or nine in total, some will gonna be more part-time, but, uh, six full-time at first.
Six full-time. And, okay, and then I have a concern regarding the parking. I know that you're really, you know, doing your best to address it, you know, with respect to like your customer base, you know? What are you gonna do to like notify your customers to park in these areas? Because this is public parking. Broadway is, you know, metered parking, it's really difficult, there's a lot of traffic on Broadway. It's a nightmare to park on Broadway for customers and for, um, people that own businesses there. You know, so what are you gonna do actively to like let your customers know that these are the areas where they can park?
Uh, first of all, um, what we're going to do is on the website, having the ad, physical address of areas that they can park, number one. Number two, like I said before, delivery is a, that the, the consumer behavior is changing and leaning more towards. Number two, like I said before, delivery is a, that the, the consumer behavior is changing and leaning more towards appointment only or delivery. And, um, uh, yeah, for us, even the maximum occupancy at a time is thirty-two people. Um, so it's not like, you know, we're just letting a whole bunch of people in at the same time, so those are the ways where we think that we can mitigate that.
Okay, and you're going to promote, like, the delivery, you'll be doing promoting of the delivery, okay? And then my final thing is the entry in the front, the exit, you know, the exit area? Um, where the customers can exit and tenants have access to that, you know, with the barrier that you're going to install, the rail? Is there any way that something else can be done there? Because I feel like there may be interaction or, you know, traffic with residents and customers, and that should stay separate. I feel like the commercial aspect, especially with this type of business, should be totally separate from the residential.
Yeah, um, we have, uh, different, um, exits that we can leverage, we have an exit from Congress. We didn't include that, um, we, we didn't think that was necessary, because we, we think the guardrails and the separation would be, uh, would suffice, especially with the, with the delayed door locks and whatnot, all the stuff that we're going to be investing in. Uh, so, but we do have other options, though, we could do Congress, we could do through the back. Uh, we could, we could do that as well if, if, if need be, but, I mean, we're open to, to it, but, you know, what we thought was the guardrails and making sure that that place was, you know, having all the security cameras and all that stuff, uh, we believe that that would, um, suffice.
Can you put a wall there, I don't know if you can put like a, instead of a rail, put something else that kind of, like, separates it, or maybe make the exit where the entrance is?
Yeah, we could look, we could look into that, that's a, that's a good idea, I can, I can take that back to the team.
Something like that, just to, yeah.
I could take that back to the team.
The same issue was brought up at the planning board, and, um, it was made clear that there, that the ga-, the rail was not going to be sufficient, that that does not prevent interaction between the clients and the tenants, in either the front or the rear. So, um, you're not, although you indicated that you could meet that requirement, you're really not meeting that requirement.
Yeah, I mean, I, that, I guess I want to reiterate, that was my concern as well, it seemed as though there's, it's a business, it's a commercial business that should be completely separate and separated from the, the residential tenants. And there has to be something more permanent than a guardrail. Um, and I'm as equally as, I'm equally as concerned about the, the back, when you're getting deliveries, that that can be both, the residents could be walking by while you're getting your deliveries, kind of stuff, so. I think, since we're not going to be deciding this today, that's something that you should talk about and think about. Um, and even though your lawyer hasn't been able to participate, he's been able to hear this, and you can share with him these concerns, but I think that there needs to be a more permanent separation, an actual separation, not a, even if it's, even if it's Plexiglas, I don't know, there should be there, there needs to be something that is a permanent separation that allows there to be a separation of that, of, of, between the customers, your customers and the residential, the residents. So you might want to think about that, how to do that, and maybe it's a change in flow, as you, as Marilyn just proposed, or it's just, you know, putting up a different, a more permanent structure. But I would suggest you think about that in anticipation of Mr. Neerson doing his proposal.
Uh, but with the deliveries, them not happening frequently, is that still a concern?
Say that again?
With the deliveries happening infrequently, not, not too often?
I mean, it, it's great that they happen infrequently, but there's still, there's still, there's still the potential for there to be interaction with the residents that should somehow be.
But, but that's with the registered agent with the CCC, like, so that's not like a cust-, like, for the back, it's, it's, customers aren't coming from the back. Right, that's like, that's going to be a registered agent.
Your product is coming from the back. And your product is coming in, you said, at the same place where people can be walking up to their apartments.
Oh, but what, what, what would be the issue with that?
Uh, that's what we're saying, we have an issue with that.
Yeah, we want to keep the commercial space separate from the residential, as, as much as possible.
That's one of the challenges of this site, and that's, I think that's.
Yeah.
Where we think is important, I mean, you can't, you, there has to be something, you know, you, you can't, the building can't be, isn't separated, so, um, if you can come up with something a little more.
We want to be able to give the residents privacy, you know, where they're entering and exiting their, their space, you know, and give you privacy and, and give your customers privacy, where they can enter and go and not have to interact with, with residents, you know, vice versa, kind of thing.
Okay, so, but my question is, if it was another business, like, that's not.
Same thing.
Cannabis-related.
I would think it would be the same thing.
If it's a pizza shop and they're getting pizza boxes and running deliveries.
It would be the same thing.
It might not be the same thing, it's not a pizza business. I mean, it's, I mean, it's.
The, the thing is, with, uh, the cannabis business, is the truck has to pull into the building, right? Does, does it have to pull into the building, or no? Does it have to be? No, okay, all right.
If it were a liquor store, I'd probably say the same thing, I mean, things where minors are, are not authorized to interact. I guess that's my, my thing that I would think about. You know, there could, you know, minors are not, you know, not allowed to be part of that business, nor are they allowed to be part of a liquor store or whatever, so. But anyway, we're, that's what we're asking you to look at, we're asking you to look at a way to more clearly delineate between your customers and the residents.
Okay, one more question about the parking that I just thought of. Could we, if there's enough space for, in the Division Street, could that be an area that we get the product from there going into the building, is that possible?
Um, I don't know if it's.
It's three hundred meters away.
But then you got to walk, so I don't, I don't, I, I don't know if there's rules from the CCC on that, I don't know.
Okay.
There may be, I don't know.
John, would, would the department be able to make a recommendation about how to solve that issue?
About, solving what issue, I'm sorry?
Whatever the parking, I mean, like, you know, would you recommend anything to them?
Well, the question came is, how much space are you renting, total?
Uh, total is, uh, what we have was fifty-seven hundred, fifty-seven hundred square feet.
Fifty-seven hundred, so you have to make up for the seven hundred, the first five thousand is exempt. So you have to make for the seven hundred, and it's one for every three hundred, so there's three spaces that they have to provide. Um, it does not have to be on-site, it could be, uh, on, in the public spaces that, uh, they identified, or in the, um.
The, the ones they're going to rent in the agreement?
Really, really shouldn't be in the rent, because that rent, that rental agreement could be up at any point. The zoning says that within three hundred feet, if owned, or if, if it can be shown that it is a, uh, uh, public or, um, a space used by, um, a bunch of, uh, residents or businesses, and he is showing that in the three hundred feet, sque-, feet on the Chestnut Street and on the Everett Ave. But it still doesn't negate the fact that there needs to be a delivery.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's really the issue, is the delivery piece at this point, I think, is the bigger question. But, which hasn't been addressed, and I, and I don't know that they can park, I don't, I, would the CCC, would, would lay, be allowed to park three hundred feet away to do a delivery?
I don't know, I would have to check on that.
May I just, just point of, uh, something? Uh, when he filled out the application and put down fifty-seven hundred fe-, square feet, he included the common area, he included the electrical room where it's coming in off the street, he included the elevator, well, he included the elevator, the stairs, the whole thing. When I took a look at it, I asked the architect if he could, if he could go down, measure it up, and, and give me exactly the spaces, that is usable space for him to lease, and it came less than five thousand square feet. Uh, I, he just, he emailed it over to me, I wasn't able to put it on bigger pieces of paper. So if that's becomes a, a small issue, I don't know.
No, no, that's important, but, but I think it still doesn't address the delivery issue.
The, the delivery issue has got to be addressed, and we will address that.
So what we're talking, you know, and so it's, again, it seems as though there are questions that need to be answered, that we are not going to have the answers to today.
Because that'd affect the residential parking, because if there's a delivery spot, right, is that what we're saying?
Right, I mean, there were, with the question, from, from what I gathered, from what we've heard, there were two issues, whether or not Mr. Neerson needs to amend his earlier permit to allow there to be one of those spots as, as a commercial spot, and, or alternatively, if they can deliver, if it would be the three, at the one that's three hundred feet away. And I don't know what the answers are to that. John?
I'm sorry?
No, nothing, did you, did you say you want to, I think you were looking on something, so I don't know, you, and, you know.
The gross or old floral space includes the elevators and mezzanines and, uh, and the like, so it is get, it is included in there.
No, I was going to say, you want to, if you can break from the public ones?
Yeah, I'll ask them, is that, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just, thank you, thank you, Arthur. Mrs. Neerson? You can share that with John, you can leave that here with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, that's okay, he's fine with that, that's present.
I can, I can scan it.
Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this? To be known, I'm not going to close this, because we have determined that we are not in a position to vote on this at this point. What?
I think you should actually have.
Actually, should, actually, let me ask a question, do we think that we can vote on this tonight?
Can I ask one more question to him?
Okay.
Uh, but the security, you said that only one security guard is going to be on-site first?
Oh, no, 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 at first it's going to be two.
Two, okay, but when, I guess, what, sixty days, ninety days?
So, based off of how we understand the flow.
How busy you get?
Like, yeah, we'll, we'll make a, a revision of that plan. And that's another thing, right, we have to be making, two things, we have to be making a revised plan every year on security, we have to be training our staff every six months, uh, and we need to be reporting with the chief, uh, with the Chelsea Police Department, going through those plans with them as well, so, but we got to do it with the CCC, and we have to do it with the Police Department every year.
Oh, okay, my question is, when one guard is in place, on the chef, where is he going to be?
Usually in the check-in, check people's ID.
Okay, and, and that, that little room, does it just get a check?
Uh, the data room is where surveillance is, there's a, um, I think that's in the basement, I think you're looking at the basement.
No, first floor.
A first floor?
Yeah.
Uh, the security, the vestibu-, yeah, that's, yep, that's where.
That's where he's going to be?
Yeah.
So nobody will be in the entrance, nobody will be in the entrance?
No. Maybe an employee, but yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? What are our thoughts about continuing and/or voting on this tonight?
I don't want.
Arthur, I mean, Joe?
I, I think there's too much that still has to be clarified, so therefore, uh.
You make a mo-
Can I make a motion?
To continue?
That we continue the case.
You may, do I have a second? Arthur, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, you don't forget your laptop.
February eighth is the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, February eighth, yes. And Mrs. Neerson talked to John in anticipation of that. Um, thank you very much, I'll give you a second to get your stuff. Thank you very much. The next case in front of us is twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-nine, one forty-six, one fifty, one fifty-six, Williams and sixty-five Pine Street. Michael Arvigno, Broadway Capital Development LLC, he has made a request to continue this to our next meeting, do I have a motion on that? Arthur's second, Joe, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Um, the next case is one that we have not yet heard, twenty-twenty-one dash thirty, twenty-four Beacon Street, Frank Dremas-, Jay Mastrocola Jr. for a special permit and variance seeking approval for the construction of a roof deck, which does not meet current minimum zoning requirements for front and rear yard setbacks, and which also exceeds maximum height, who's here to speak on this one?
Well, for Chelsea Properties Trust.
So, just as a reminder, this is, is the first time we've hearing it, so the board will not be deciding today. Because there's a special permit, it will have to go to the planning board on the twenty-fifth of January, and back in front of us on the eighth of February.
Right.
Okay, and also as a reminder, there's a variance requirement here, so you have to meet each of the conditions of the variance. Okay, now could you propose for us, John?
One other, uh, the next meetings will not be in-person, they will be remote, uh, Zoom meetings, we will send you the link, uh, on the day of the meeting.
Good.
And we won't have to wear masks for that, which makes it a lot easier. Um, okay, Mr. Mastrocolo, what are you proposing?
Um, so we're, we're proposing the construction of a fourteen by fourteen roof deck, um, on the, on the top of the building. It's something that, um, we think would be able to enhance the building, um, and make it more appealing to residents of the building. Uh, there are other buildings in the neighborhood that do have roof decks, um, that we want to be able to align ourselves with. We have one abutter to our building, um, that we have spoken with, and I'd like to offer a letter of, of, uh, from that.
Okay, there, let's read that. Okay, one, so let's read this for the record to whom it may concern, I, April Schwartz, I'm a trustee for the Beacon Park condo trust, which is twenty-eight thirty Beacon Street, and my partner, Pepper Fee, and I live at thirty Beacon number four. We have seen the proposed roof deck for twenty-six Beacon Street and think that the proposed plan is very reasonable for the size, et cetera, and have absolute no objections to them adding the roof deck. Unfortunately, we are unable to attend the meeting, but as the closest neighbor, we wanted to be sure to let the city know that we have no objections. Anytime that we have ever had the slightest issue with any tenants from twenty-six Beacon, we share an enclosed alley with trash barrels for both buildings. Mastrocola management has responded immediately and effec-, efficiently, and we feel very fortunate to have such a responsible owner next door. I cannot imagine that they would tolerate any misuse of the roof deck that would inconvenience anyone in our area. Tenants may act out occasionally, but I know that if there is an issue, it will be dealt with. Cordially, April Schwartz and Pepper Fee. So what is it, talk, do you have any pictures of what you want us to look at, or do you want to just talk to us about what you're proposing?
John, were you able to upload some of those?
Ah, here we go, the wonders of.
Sorry, I have to find it. I had it here.
So tell us what, what we're looking, so it's a fourteen, you said fourteen by fourteen?
That's correct.
How, what is the setback from the front of the building, the back of the building, give us some background where you're talking.
Yeah, so, um, the setbacks on the front of the building, uh, based upon where the deck is being placed, um, is.
Oops, you're upside down. It's right, will this help?
Does this help?
Yeah, that's it, that's how it's looking.
So, just for orientation. The building sits, the building sits on a front lawn on Beacon, uh, and the one side, the rear of the building is, uh, wanting to park. And then we have Noah butter on front lawn, and we have Noah butter on Beacon.
Oh, sir, you've got to use the, I'm sorry, I, thank you, thank you. My bad.
Um, so we have, we have virtually three sides of the building with Noah butters. Um, the abutter on the, um, left side of the building is whom you've heard from with their, their letter of support. Um, the deck is, would be placed literally in the middle of the roof. The setbacks at the rear end of the building are eleven point three and eleven point two respectively, eleven three and eleven one on Tremont Street side. The front of the building is fifteen point four on that, the closest corner, and then the, the back corner of the deck to the property line at the side of the building is twenty point eight.
So it's going to be, but it's going to be a, a, right up to the line that is the designation of twenty-six, just, is it, that's what it looks like, is that? I mean, is it, is it a budding, you're on, you're twenty-four?
Well, we're twenty-four, twenty-six.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
So the, the, if you look at the deck, the, the whole roof here.
Okay.
The deck is sort of right in the middle here, fourteen by fourteen, right in the middle.
Okay, great, thank you, great. And what is, what is the height variance, is it because of the railings?
Yes, yeah, the, the height variance is three and a half feet, um, which is, which is basically the rail height.
And are there any restrictions, are you planning to put, like, a fire pit up there or anything like that?
Oh, no, 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 um, we understand the, 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 uh, the laws regarding fire pits on, on roof decks, and we wouldn't do that. We would, certainly wouldn't allow any heaters, or any, uh, portable grills, or any gas grills, um, no propane at all.
So just furniture, for the most part?
Sorry?
Furniture, for the most part.
Furniture, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's basically for us to allow our tenants to have some open space. There's really nothing around the building, with the exception of, of the park here, which is utilized primarily as a dog park. Um, and, and I think the school kids go there during the day, but, but there's really no, no green space for our tenants to use, so there's a couple of units on the building that have their own personal decks that are off their unit. On one side of the building, there are three units that have that opportunity, but the remaining four units in the building have no option to do that, so we really just want to provide some outdoor space for all residents of the building.
Are there any questions?
Yes, there'll be a rail, there'll be a rail, John, I think you have a picture of the, of the, um, the proposed. John, I think you have a picture of the, of the, um, the proposed finished deck.
That's all I, that's all I have.
You weren't able to scan a picture.
That could've been in the petition itself.
I see it, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a.
Is this?
You're getting there. There you go. So, that's how it'll look. And you can see, you can see the proximity to the abutting building. It's really quite a bit away, with no, with no sightline obstruction. Neither is there a sightline obstruction from the buildings across the street.
Any other questions?
What's, what's gonna happen to the, um, the air pipes or the plumber pipes? I see ones that are bent, like a ninety type. I can see a little bit on this picture, like these two pipes.
Yeah, those stay. They're, they're not, the, the deck does not impede those. Um, the, the, um, plan and the positioning of the deck is such that it, it's within these vent pipes and the, the other, um, venting that's on the roof.
But are they staying? Are they staying in the?
They're staying, then nothing's being moved.
And how many total tenants are in the building?
There are seven.
Seven?
Mm-hmm.
And any children, will go upstairs?
Sorry?
Any children will go upstairs, they have children?
No, there's no children in the building. Okay.
Arthur?
How many people can, are allowed up there, John? Is there a, a limit?
There, there is. Um, with the existing, with the existing, um, size of the deck and without, um, with the egress that's there, um, we have a maximum limit of fifty people. And we would never approach that limit, given the, the size of the building. The, the units in the building are all one-bedroom units. So, the residency is, is quite small. Um, and we would never approach the fifty-person limit that, that we would be allowed to have.
Um, are you the association manager member?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, drink can be allowed up there?
Um.
I'm just asking, because, you know, it, it's, sometimes it's loud, like I know.
Yeah.
I, I have a single family, and there's a double or triple decker, and there's a, they fixed it, but if it's loud up, you know, if there's a lot of noise up there, it'll carry into the neighborhood. That's always, that's always my concern.
Sure, I appreciate that. We have, um, we have another building, um, directly on the other side of the park, that we have a roof deck on. It's similar in size relative to the number of units and the number of residents in the building.
Okay.
That particular building is one three-bedroom unit and five one-bedroom units. So, the relative amount of people are, are virtually the same. Um, we've never had an issue on that building since we've been in it since, you know, the last twenty-five years. Never once have we had an issue there. We've never had a complaint from one of the neighbors. Um, if we ever did, it would, it would certainly be something that we'd address immediately. It's not something that we would expect or tolerate. So, if we had any noise complaints from any of the, any of the neighborhood residents, we certainly would address it immediately. But, you know, we fully anticipate that people are gonna use it, that's the point.
No, of course, go upstairs, go up there and just hang out and.
Exactly.
Get some sun or.
Coffee in the morning.
Yeah, or go upstairs and, oh, snow. How's the snow come off?
Um, melting.
But it's flat. Is someone gonna go up?
Well, it's got a pitch, you know, it does, the roof does have a pitch.
But on, on the deck, it's, it was the snow, will someone go move the snow off the deck?
Yeah, well, we, we, we don't anticipate that many people will be using it in the wintertime, but if.
No, 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 what I'm saying is that if there's enough snow on there, and it, like we had five years ago.
Oh, I, oh, I see.
Hundred feet of snow.
You're talking about weight.
Weight-wise, yes, definitely.
Well, we'd have to disperse it from the deck and just.
No, no, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So, some of them won't go up there and check and make sure.
But, but, you know, this has been structurally engineered, and the, the limits are such that that's really not a concern unless you reach something that's truly extraordinary, but.
No, I don't, but I'm just thinking about the hundred, hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah, it's always a concern on flat roofs.
The inches of snow that we had, you know, five or six years ago.
Right.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else, for open to public? Is there anybody here? This will not be one year only, oh, I'm sorry, Marilyn, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
So, there probably will not be landscaping, but there will be lighting. There's, um, John, if you could go back to that rendering of the, of the deck. Here, good. You see, there's lighting on the, on the, um, on the roof hut itself. Um, and, you know, given that the, the deck itself is not a huge deck, it's only fourteen by fourteen, there's really not a lot of light that you need. As long as the walkway leading to the deck from the roof hut is, is illuminated, that's really what we, what we need. And then immediately inside the doorway, there's lighting on the stairwell. So, um, it's really not a condition where it's gonna be too dark.
Is the roof hut new, or is the roof hut there?
No, that's existing.
It's existing, yeah.
Is there any, is, is it gonna be a timeframe that people can use it, or can go?
There'll be no limitation. We asked that people be reasonable with it, you know, um, and, and people are for the most part. You know, our other building that we have. You know, unfortunately, that roof deck doesn't get much use, and I'm surprised, and I'm, I'm, I'm really surprised. But people, when they do use it, generally you, you find them, you know, coffee in the morning, um, after work at night, and some weekend use. But it's really not a condition where people are going up there at five in the morning, or twelve o'clock at night. It just doesn't get that kinda use.
And there'll be downlight, the lights will be down, to, not go into the neighborhood?
So, the light that's there, the surface mounted light right on the roof hut, that will be the light.
That will be it?
That'll be it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, if there's, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this? This will not be your only attempt, because they will have to be back here on February eighth. Well, actually, back on Zoom on February eighth. And the Planning Board is also by Zoom? The Planning Board on one twenty-five will also be by Zoom, and John will send you the information. So, they will have additional questions, they'll make a recommendation to us. And again, make sure you're familiar with the conditions of a variance, so that you can answer each of the questions, because they all have to be answered in the affirmative in order for us to be able to allow them. We don't have any, any leeway.
John, I had one question on, um, on the comments that were made. Is the, the fire department's comment a typo? Did they, it seems to indicate that, that they don't have an opposition, but then they say remind the owner about the propane and the grill.
Yeah, they don't object to the deck itself, however they are.
It seems to be written that they do. That's why I ask you that.
Reports that it has no objections to petition, to the petition, but the, but the petitioner is reminded to comply with the city ordinance. There is a city ordinance of no grills above ground level, and no storage or, or use of LP gas container.
Okay, good.
No objection, as long as you don't mess with that.
Yeah. Well, just so you know, that a lot of the fires that, that happened is because there's a grill or something, right? That people, you know, so that's, he's, they're just trying to continue to remind people that. I know you do, but, but that's like, that's always an issue, right? There's all the fires that happen around, it's because there's.
It's a very big concern, and that's, that's something that we, we just wouldn't tolerate.
No, absolutely.
It's not, it's not to be considered a grilling area, it's be considered just a lounging area.
No, of course.
Yeah.
No, 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 that's, they, they just wanna do that just to, you know, because.
Right.
They never told me, well, there we go, you know.
No, I understand it, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
See you virtually next month.
Thank you.
The next case in front of us is twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one, twelve Lewis Street, Fatima Belham, Belhamry, for special permit to establish a driveway and curb cut, which does not meet current minimum requirements for parking within the required front yard setback or property, of property, or within five feet of the side lot line, nor within five feet of any wall containing ground floor or basement windows. Again, this is a special permit, which will we not be deciding today. It will be virtually before the Planning Board on the twenty-fifth of this month, and virtually before us on the eighth of February.
Thank you, good evening.
What do you want?
I know, just like I, I, it's first time.
Tell us who you are formally, for the record, please.
Yeah, it's just like, um, if I knew about the presentation, it could have.
Need to tell us your name and address first, please.
I'm sorry, Fatima Belhamry, twelve Lewis Street, Chelsea.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I was saying, like, I, if I knew, I wish I could make presentation, that's where it could kind of express better my idea.
Tell us what you're looking for, just walk us through what you're looking for.
I'm in for driveway, uh, I applied for it, was denied because, um, they say it doesn't meet certain requirements for the city's ordinance. And that's why I kind of applying to see if that could be kind of with the changes that we're presenting with the planning.
John, do you wanna walk through that? Wanna show us what this looks like, so she can talk us through it?
I don't have the, um, I know, I'm sorry, I don't have a.
Twelve Lewis Street, right there, above, no?
This?
Google Map, I see twelve Lewis, yeah, well, I just see, okay. Do, any pictures of what she's looking for? Okay.
Yes, that's our house.
So, this is your home, so tell us where you're, take, when you're, if you walk over there, please bring that microphone with you.
I mean, that's what we're looking for, to make some changes, I mean, remove that, of course. And then the landing, the stairway landing, just make some reduction to this, the size, just to kind of make it more ample for parking spot. And I guess that's the only thing we're asking, just like if it is possible.
But you need a curb cut, right? You don't have a curb cut, it looks like.
No.
And will we be losing a parking, will there be losing a parking space on the street?
Yeah, that's John telling me, and I kind of, that's something that's concerned as well.
Arthur?
How many, pardon, what are you looking for, two? Just one?
Yeah, for, no, we're just looking for one.
Let her answer, unless you wanna get a testimony.
Yeah, we have two car, I, we have two car, I have to sell one, because it was impossible for us just to find parking lots. And that restricts much, too much for how much we can do, like, kind of go for shopping, go with the family activities, so for the kids' activities, because always thinking, okay, we're gonna go do this and that, and then we come back, oh my God, there is no parking spot for us. Just like looking around where we can leave our part, our car. And also, we have been, had some concern about having two hit-and-run accidents, car accidents in our, when we left our car in the street, was like kind of very stressful for us, just to, to don't know who, who hit our car for the first time, second time, so it's like, there was some driver that was kind of, I don't know what happened to him, was like in the middle of the night, and he hit the car, and then just kind of run away.
But John, we don't give approval for curb cuts here, right?
No, that's, uh, DPW.
Right, so.
So, even if you do, uh, vote to, uh, approve it, it's, she will still have to go to DPW to get the, the sign off on it.
Right, we can't, we can't, if there's not a curb cut or driveway there, we don't have the right to tell you that you can put one. Just so you know, that's, we can't do that. What, where, you're in front of us, because you wanna put parking in areas that the zoning code says you can't do it, which is too close to things, so that's what we're here to talk about.
I've been looking around, because I was seeing like the other places in, in the same street, to see if they have like kind of same dimensions. And it was like front of us, one, they have similar kind of land, why they're a little bit lo, uh, wider than our space, but they have for two cars. And the length, like from the, from here to the front, was like kind of similar dimension. I was just thinking maybe that's, at least could meet the requirements for one parking spot there, one, just for one car. We mean, can just like looking for somewhere to fit our car there.
And so, how close, so it would be, how close is it to your neighbor's property, what you're proposing?
You mean the?
The parking, the parking spot. Where's, so where, is it go right up to the line? Where would you put your part, where would you put your driveway?
Uh, all right, I mean, I think it's right here. This one's gonna be reduced, of course, because it's taking more, much space. But we're gonna just push it front, a little bit in front of the door, and this one's gonna be, I'm sorry, the touch.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the, um, what you, what you submitted.
I can see.
Yeah, the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I guess I did not copy the, um, the petition here, I'm sorry.
So, you want a twenty, it looks from the twenty-one by nineteen driveway, new driveway. So, here's where, here's the.
So, it, it, it's going to be, as, as you're showing your plan, it's actually gonna be right to the property line?
Yes.
Okay, so there's.
Can I show a picture, like the final, I don't know if you're gonna pass it on, if you don't mind, just like an idea.
Talk into the phone, microphone, please, make sure you're talking into the microphone.
I'm sorry, yeah, just like final and picture of how it will look if, in case we have to make changes, yes.
Is that normally a grassy area?
What's that?
Is it normally grassy?
Uh, it's just, just a little bit, yeah. We don't use it for nothing, just like a useful place, and just like.
Anybody wants to see?
There all the time, just kind of make us work hard just to clean all the time for snow, things like that. We don't use it for nothing.
How, how big is this entrance here on the right side by the stairs? There's a little entrance, right?
Yes.
The one in the back, here by the stairs?
Yes.
So, right, that, that's a little entrance, right?
Yes.
How big is that?
How big is that? Um.
Since you're, since you're up, sir, why don't you take the microphone and just, okay, you're, you're not talking.
I know, he's just gonna show that.
Okay.
I mean, uh, it, you mentioned it there, I don't remember the.
This entrance, how wide is it, you know? This entrance, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's in, see, it's in the, it's in.
Yeah, it's here, I think.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, that little door that you can see on the back, on the picture?
Maybe two, two feet, three feet.
That's where you take the trash out?
Yes, that's the way, we have the trash in the back, always keep it there, it's filled there, like a little bit.
What was your question again?
How wide was that, that?
That spot?
Yeah, this spot, yeah.
That's part of their backyard?
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions?
So, this is a single family?
Mm-hmm.
So, you only need one space?
Yes, just one space.
Okay, um, just, one of my questions and my thoughts are, you're take, you know, one of the things that you're doing is you're taking, in doing this, you're taking a space off the street. So, often when we allow this, we like there to be no net loss. So, this one there's sort of, it's neutral, there's, I might act not true, there's one, there's a loss of a parking spot.
But it's, it's kind like our spot that's outside, usually if you found it, it's gonna be inside, you know what I mean?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Like, it's like, imagine that's our spot that is outside, that we're taking inside.
E- exactly, so, we understand that. And so, but, but now you're, now anybody can have that spot, but now you're the only one who can have that spot. So, that's something that I just think we need to think about as part of the, you know.
If was two, like two or three more, or like one.
Your next-door neighbor could take that spot now.
Yeah.
Cause it's not yours.
I know.
And I don't know if there are handicap, you know, issues, and that's one of the things we probably wanna look at, whether or not there are any handicap. But, uh, but anyway, so this is, again, we're not gonna be deciding, what, John?
I just, a photo I just wanna show you. This is actually, uh, Riverside Avenue in Metford, right around the corner. And you see how they've allowed all the front parking to be converted to residential? It's a safety concern.
Exactly, that's what we're looking for.
Because they all directly pull, uh, back out into the street, and only that is an aesthetic concern. I'm not saying that that's necessarily the situation here, I'm saying that's probably something the board wants to avoid.
Yeah, right. Okay, so, again, we're not gonna be deciding, this, I'm gonna open it up, but technically, there seems to be nobody here. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? There being none, we are not closing this virtually on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-eighth, oh, okay.
Twenty-fifth.
Oh, right, Planning Board.
At the Planning Board. And the eighth here, um, virtually in front of the zoning board. And, you know, one of the questions to think about is, you know, the whole, you're, you're getting a parking spot, and you're losing a parking spot on the street by doing that. And again, keep in mind, we do not allow the curb cuts, that's not our job.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, can I just ask, there's no, there's not enough space there for two spots, for two cars, only one? Based on the measurements that are there?
They only want one spot.
Oh, they only want one spot?
I mean, they don't, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would, if you look at in their, kind of the picture, it's, it has enough for two space, of course.
And 19 feet is certainly enough space.
Space for two cars, yeah.
It'll be, it'll be a little tight, but they could do it.
Wouldn't it be ideal to get like permission for two cars versus one?
Not if they only have one car.
I, I mean, if we can get two.
Not like if they have gas or visitors or something.
I, I sold my car because there's, there was so many problems to find parking for even one, even, even imagine for two, but if we have two parking permits, that would be great.
Would be beneficial for...
Yeah, I think it would be beneficial to...
Allow to...
If this was to be passed, that it, you would be allowed to park two cars versus one.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, that's mine.
I mean, you could give permission for up to two vehicles.
Okay.
Oh my God, that's would be great because that's going to help us kind of live, normal life.
How close will be your driveway to the fence on your left side of the house? To the fence, to your neighbor's driveway? How close will be the driveway to that fence?
It would be like a bucket.
About a foot.
I don't think, it shows there, is it?
Yeah, we have enough space because there's, I'm sorry.
The, the plan that was sent with it shows it, uh, the pavement right up to the fence on the left side of the photo here, so it'll be abutting to the, oh, you, what you're saying is you can't see if the, if the neighbor's driveway is right next to it.
Right. Ma'am, 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 ma'am.
Yeah, but my question is, how close will be to this side, to the left side, how, how close will be the driveway, is like a foot in between?
Maybe one foot, yeah. I, I, I don't know how, exact measurement, but it's going to be...
That's another...
Space between...
Will you have a, will you keep the fence? Will you add a new fence? Will you keep the fence just to separate?
Yes, that's going to, we're going to have to keep it, yes, of course.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, yeah, you got, you see, you can talk, you got to say who you are.
No, we have like kind of, it's built-in fence and then the, the...
Chain link.
The middle one, yeah, this one, between us, and we're going to keep it that, we don't touch it, because just to keep like, and the space between both parking lot.
Okay, okay, we'll see you, well, we'll see you on the Zoom next month.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have only one other thing for you, for the board.
Yeah.
Um, got to find it.
You're all set.
Yes, you're all set, until, thank you very much. Thank you, stay warm.
So, uh, the, in this proposal on Central Ave, uh, the conversion of the, um, uh, Housing Authority apartments to mixed affordable market rate, uh, they are going forward in